I see the first thing on the agenda is a Commissioner of Deeds for Basila Garcia Hage, 81 Prescott Street, City Employee Court. Any questions, any problems? I used to live at 81.
Prescott?
Yeah.
I grew up on Prescott.
Yeah.
Where you live now?
Long time ago.
Everybody lives on Prescott now.
It's a great road. It's a great street.
Eight houses.
Yep.
Paul was by like six times a day, so.
I don't know why.
The second piece is another Commissioner of Deeds for Ingrid B. Chris, could you say your last name for me?
He said, he's Sano.
He's Sano. 919 Cherry Street. She's also a city employee. Any, any questions, any problems? The next one is also a Commissioner of Deeds. Edick Rosick, 1601 South Sur Place, Utica, New York, 13501, another city employee. Any questions? Uh, fourth one, another Commissioner of Deeds. Do we have to have the Commissioner of Deeds in by the end of the year or?
No. Petitions season's coming.
Yeah, they technically expire.
People just don't want their stuff there. Employees need them beginning of the year.
Okay. I just, thank you. The next Commissioner of Deeds is for John J. Golf II, 15 Concord Boulevard, Clinton, Oneida County employee. Any questions, any problems?
We did this one in the past meeting, but he moved from Utica to Clinton. So we're just redoing it because it's a new address.
Okay. Thank you. Another Commissioner of Deeds. Thank you. Tatiana Brooks, 708 Noe Street, Apartment 2, Utica, New York, 1352, another city employee. Another Commissioner of Deeds. Thalia Hunter, 701 Buchanan Road, Utica, New York, 13502, another city employee.
I grew up on Buchanan Road.
Is that right?
737.
I rode my bike on Buchanan Road. And went for the treaty.
No, I get a question. You can be a county employee and live outside the city to be a Commissioner of Deeds?
As long as you show proof that you live in the city, that you work in the city.
You have to live or work.
Oh, you have to live or work. Okay. I didn't know how that worked. Thank you. Clarification. Uh, number seven is a council member, Urban. It's placement of an honorary sign for Chief Apostle W. J. Steele on Miller and West Street. You want to put that in committee? Well, here's another Commissioner of Deeds for David R. Raffaro, 101 James Street, Utica, New York, 13501. Okay. The next is a order amending the composition of the borough for the police to add temporary because of the.
Can we do this one at the end? We'll do the next two.
We can skip this one, go to number 10. Well, another Commissioner of Deeds. Anthony Leon, 501 Mary Elaine Drive, Utica, New York, 13502. No. The next one's another Commissioner of Deeds. Thomas Allen, Peel Box, 756 New Hartford, New York. Allen, yeah. Uh, City, City Utica Marshall. Okay, now we can go back to number nine.
And I can highlight this.
Yeah. If you, if you'd like to speak on it?
Sure. So we all know in 2022, we added five police officers, paying for them with ARPA. It expires December 31st, 2024 this year. So as people retire or leave, starting January 1st, those positions will not, will no longer be with the police department. We cannot fill them. So at first I was, I just made legislation looking at extending this for about another two years. We thought we had the money. We have various grants. Also though, here is an email from Mary Gleme, and it looks like they came up with a compromise of three officers permanently. So I don't know what the council wants to do. I think we should extend something and.
I'm okay. I'm going to make a motion that we put it in committee.
So here's, uh, if we do that, we can, but then January 1st, uh, we will start losing people.
That's a legislation that we all passed on. We all passed, um, when this legislation originally came up. Um, but I think once we figure out where our budget is and things like that, it'll probably be more responsible.
So here's a couple other things I want to touch on with that. That is an option. Uh, we have a $625,000 grant. It's good for three years. It can pay for five police officers. If we reduce that, we lose 125,000 per officer.
No, the grant still stays there. It goes simultaneously.
No, there's an email I have here from Captain Banster for you to read over.
Sure.
So we lose, uh, we would lose, not lose, I mean, we have to decide if sometimes you spend money to do this. So.
But it's not correct.
It is correct. I can give you guys the application. I write it myself as well, which is fine if we want to lose 125,000 for two officers, which would be 250,000 total. Other points here is we have, uh, well, the mayor saying ARPA is exhausted. There's 374,000 in gun violence prevention. There's 300,000 in pathways to justice. My concern is there's no contract yet in place for pathways to justice. If we don't have this money actually allocated, we lose it by December 31st. Uh, there's also, Marion Button Sean gave us a grant over the summer totaling about $60,000. The administration has not made a contract for that yet, so we haven't received it. And then there was, I have an article here. It says, uh, Speaker, uh, this was from Marion Button Sean, August 29th, 2023. The city was awarded a grant of $3 million. $2 million was for the ski center. Another $1 million was for, to be divided up amongst Safe Schools Mohawk Valley and then recruitment and outreach efforts for UPD. I don't know how much of this is technically available then for this. I've heard anywhere from 250,000, could be 500,000. Uh, the city has not made a contract to receive this money yet either, but we do have $3 million from the state they want to give us. So altogether, these grants, it's looking like we have about 1.6 million that we can use for police officers. And that's why I've been aggressive of, I think we should put it in writing to extend it for the officers before, uh, December 31st.
Did anybody verify this?
Which, which numbers exactly?
I have a group of all on your papers.
So I can't, uh, without the actual grant letter, I can't confirm what this email says. With the.
Is that the grant letter?
That was the email I was asking.
This is not the grant letter. This is the.
Oh, that one.
If we, if we do keep the three officers for a three-year period, there'll be about a $60,000 budget increase in the salary line, uh, which is sustainable. Five would increase the budget line significantly more.
50,000 times three, right?
Yeah.
So it's 180.
But, yeah, divide it up into, into each here. Uh, so as far as the budget goes, the three officers would be sustainable.
So when she just. Can I just? Wait. With that $60,000 figure, that includes the Schumer grant.
Fifty and a half thousand.
The 60,000 one?
Because it's about $90,000 per officer. So the $60,000 figure includes a third from Schumer. Just want to, I want to make sure that's.
Which is in this.
That's accurate. Okay. So Schumer's grant is not a full, fully funded.
Oh, yeah.
It's about, it's a partial. It's 30, they're about 33% per officer to cover. An officer, a new officer costs about roughly $90,000.
The 33% is the city's pay.
No, that's what Schumer pays.
That's what, okay.
Well, I should say Schumer, the federal grant, yeah.
Well, and then when I did the math over four years.
I, I, and I could be wrong. That's my understanding.
And I think the other important part, this grant for 625,000, it's great for three years, but the fourth year, we have to pay for however many officers we decide wholly. Kind of like the Safer Grant. So then, uh, when you do the math with that, it was, if we did five officers for four years, the grant total on my spreadsheet, it was about 1.9 million. Just call it 2 million. So either way, uh, you can deduct the 625,000 grant. If ARPA went to it, all of these other grants I have tallied here is about 1.6 million that we have on the table. I'm not saying you can just automatically subtract that, but I think there is, uh, room to have this conversation of, I think we could get $2 million worth of officers for the city over four years for five officers for about $400,000.
Kate, can I have the floor for one second?
The compliment was tied to ARPA funding.
Wait.
So how you apply for a grant and ask for additional positions through a sunset clause that doesn't apply to that grant and say that you would lose the grant if you don't change that is, is where I'm missing the connection to where she's trying to get at.
The grant says it covers that for those positions.
But, but you can't use it with ARPA funding. The ARPA funding had to be eliminated in order to use those positions.
I called.
So my, so we applied for that grant in anticipation of the, of the sunset clause. Our understanding was that that grant can't be used when the ARPA money is still being spent on the positions.
It can't.
And then I was.
Our understanding was once the ARPA money ran out, then that grant could start if the council chose to, with the sunset clause, add positions again, whatever, however many positions they chose to add. And with that grant, that grant covers approximately 30% of the officers. When I say salary, I mean salary, I mean fringe, I mean.
Yeah.
benefits.
That's what I am here.
Roughly 30% of an officer, which is, an officer costs about $90,000. So it would cost the city about $60,000 per officer, however many officers they chose to add, once the ARPA funding runs out. That's my understanding of it.
And then I was, Joe, maybe. I was, yeah.
So I just, I just want to reiterate something. I'm on the Board of Contract and Supply. I keep hearing how much money is left in ARPA, but yet when I go to the meetings at Contract and Supply, there's so many projects. I mean, one big one, Valley View, are way over. So it's, I don't want to hear that we're not going to use this money by December 31st because we're going to be short money. And Amer, can you speak to that? Am I correct?
The ARPA project, yes.
On, on ARPA money, ARPA funding, we are going to be short with the projects that we still have going now, left. Right? We're not going to have a problem. Nobody's going to come here in January, and if they do, I'm going to kind of be upset because I've said it over and over to say, we had 200,000 and we didn't spend it. I know when I sit there every Thursday, I, I kind of get aggravated all the time when I see, you guys know, the change order here, this, here, that, there. And so there's not going to be, I want to, for the record, there's not going to be money left over from ARPA. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't want to hear that we got 3, 400,000 in ARPA because we don't. Thank you.
And I also just want to add on to the fact is that you couldn't use that grant even if there was ARPA money left. Because the grant isn't tied to ARPA funding. That's the whole point, is to replenish those positions once that grant funding runs out. And if I can. You're not going to lose that because you could still utilize it for the positions that you have, not necessarily tied to the three additional positions that the mayor sent in a letter to all of us. So I think that that's if we come, what, what if we come down to a decision on what we want to do? That funding that the chief was just talking about could fund three additional positions, but we would still have to pay for it out of the budget. I believe it was due to about $60,000.
If I can correct on that, when I called asking for that same question, they told me that those five officers.
Who did you call?
A number of people.
What, who's a number of people?
We don't need to dox people.
Because you always say that you talk to people. We never know who you talk to. That's half the problem.
You're, okay.
So who did you talk to? Because that, that would be very nice to know so that we can verify what you're saying, to get that information.
You don't even know what I'm about to say yet. So let's just hang in there.
So who was it?
We have, I was told these five officers.
Who, by who?
With the grant. That is paid for by the 625,000. There are other police officers. We have a whole complement of 165 other people that could, you could pay ARPA salaries with.
By who?
Just like we have been doing. So that's how I was told with a grant.
But who did you hear that from?
If you really need a source, I'm not going to.
Oh, we need to know.
Captain Banzer.
I mean, we can't hide a source. If I know who I'm getting the information from.
No, it's just how you roll. So you have Captain Banzer, you have Cassandra from the grants, you have, uh, I've talked with the comptroller's office, uh, not today with that one, but before. So that's where I've always thought we can combine it. I know you can't literally for those five officers, but you can use ARPA because it's gun violence prevention. So there's, you could give it to the give team with ARPA funds and cover those guys instead. So there's options.
Katie, can I?
Please.
One thing too. I just want to clarify a couple of things. So, Deputy Chief, so on this, these five guys, okay, so two of them, for the record, even if we went with three, okay, the two guys, two jobs are not going to be let go because by the first of the year, there's going to be five people retiring and we're going to have to hire three. Is that correct?
So, so just to clarify, no, no, the way, I understand, the way the legislation was written is January 1st, no one, no one could ever, will ever lose their job. They're lost through attrition. Right now we have one vacancy and we're, we have got notification of three retirements in January and we expect up to, um, three more. So we anticipate seven vacancies. If this goes into, if, if council does nothing.
Those five positions.
Those five positions are, are gone. So we'll have two openings. Does that make, does that make sense? Those five positions are, are, are gone. So we'll have two openings. Does that make, does that make sense?
Right. Okay, so the other question is, you guys talked that these jobs are gonna be permanent now. So we're not gonna have to do this in, okay, in three years again, right? They're gonna be permanent?
That's your fault. That's not mine.
Okay.
We, I, 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 I'll take as many jobs as you wanna give us.
No, no, I, I know that, but we're not gonna have to, it's, it's not like it's a grant. They're, we're not gonna be doing this again.
No, if you, if you change the complement, you change the complement.
Okay, so that, okay, that's what I want, that's what I want.
We can still use the grant, right?
That goes back to the point of why you should never sunset positions, because you get to the point where you're gonna have to come back to this.
Okay, but we don't have to if we do it this way. Now, my other question, my other question here is, the, as far as the, the other people, the, the two other officers going forward and stuff, if we keep all five, okay, how much is that gonna cost the city every, eh, this coming budget? Because here's the problem. Here's what's gonna happen.
With or without the grant?
If we, if we keep five instead of three. Okay, if we, if we don't, so, cause what I think we should do, okay, since nobody's losing their job, okay, I know, uh, everybody here keeps saying how much money's in the budget, he's hiding money, he's doing that. Yet, everybody here is gonna say, let's keep five police officers, and when April comes and we have to talk about a tax increase, everybody's gonna be squawking about that. So to me, the smartest thing to do, since nobody's losing their job, is let's save the three permanent guys. The other two are gonna be working. Let's see where the budget comes. When the budget comes, we decide if we have money in the bank, in there, to add two more permanent officers. That's personally my opinion. That's what we have all agreed on. Every, well, I don't know if everybody's here. Everyone who's here that was there three years ago, all voted yes on this, and we all knew that at the end of three years, this was gonna happen, okay, and we were gonna have to come to this. I think it's great that we came to it now, that we have money for three, and, uh, I mean, I just, just my opinion there. I just think that we should just, you know, if, if it was somebody losing their job and gonna be out of work, I'd say, okay, cause I'm all for public safety and don't wanna lose anybody. But nobody's losing. Within a couple months, they're gonna be gone, you're gonna be there, and we need to add a couple. We need to add a couple, cause obviously, we got a lot of problems. You know, and this, this was snug, right Eddie? A lot of this with guns, these are the guys that took the guns off the street and all that stuff, correct?
So, so a few things. This, this is our, uh, crime prevention unit. They did a fantastic job, and I had, I had the data with reducing gun violence. We got accolades from the governor's office. They've done a phenomenal job. That's what funded, the ARPA money funded these positions. Just to back to your point, just for transparency, what this does is we, we, these positions, where people are gonna retire. So what, whatever decisions you make is gonna result in how many people we can hire in April.
How to fill those positions up.
From, from, anywhere from two to seven. So we're not, come January, we're not, no one's, we're not losing anything. But it's gonna determine how many positions, people we can hire.
And I just wanna.
Mr. Chairman.
Judge, we've got the floor. And the only, the only thing that I wanna say is that through this legislation of what they, what they did originally when this legislation was passed, and we were all here, it's not like, there might be a couple new people that are here to the actual legislation. This was to sunset back automatically to that 165, okay, no matter what. If we didn't vote on the legislation, it would go back to that 165 as of that December 31st date. What the chief did, what the deputy chief did, and whoever else worked with them, was they went and applied for a grant, so that you could add back however many positions were covered under that grant.
We did that knowing that this.
Knowing that this grant would run out, knowing that the ARPA fund would run out. So what we did, what they did, and what we did, and obviously in support of them, because whatever that funding through that grant that they applied for, we can add back those positions. We have no problem with that. The, the argument that I, I'm losing sight on is the fact that we, we can maintain these positions right now. You'll never, you'll, the legislation states that they're done December 31st. So take that grant and what he's telling you and what they applied for, add those three positions back, and then reassess the two additional positions once budget season comes. And I think that the police department is in an understanding, knowing that the city just raised taxes last year, to figure out where our financial position is moving forward. Would, would you agree with that assumption in, in stating that that's the, the, where we are right now?
Mr. Chairman.
Chief.
So, so I, I don't, so the mayor and the chief had a conversation, their, their end agreement was that because of the unknown financial situation in the city, they agreed that we would hope to get three positions.
And if we could do the two additional ones and keep those five back, I think that that's the goal.
We would like to two positions, once, once the financial.
I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the council, but I think that that would be a goal for all of us, to keep all those five positions. Or we just leave it in committee, and we don't do anything, they, they have those five positions that are, that are gonna be vacant now, because that's what the legislation that everybody voted on stated. Or make the amendment, add the complement back to three, and like I said, reassess those positions. But either way, if you don't act on it, or you do act on it, or, excuse me, if you don't act on it, it sunsets back. And that was part of the problem of the original component, that I didn't wanna vote on this legislation, because I never think that you should sunset an ordinance. Because at the end of the day, you're putting the council in this, back in this position of, oh, us versus police, and trying to add the complement back, and that's, that's what I'm seeing is happening now. And I'd rather be comfortable knowing that we have the money for those grants and what the chief worked for to keep those three positions back. And if those two additional positions are needed, just kinda see where we are, but.
Obviously, we, we know they're needed, but the, the last thing that I'm, the last thing is, where does it all come from? Where does the, the, uh, like she's saying about the hundred, about the, we're gonna lose 100 some odd thousand, where is that coming?
I have no idea what she's talking about.
If you can, okay, I'm gonna read his email right here. In addition, any reduction in.
Who's this from?
Captain Banster. It's all on your table.
But does Captain Banster speak on behalf of the whole entire police department? Cause I think that a memo like this should come from the chief.
Cassandra, it was the chief, he was CC'd on this. This is a group conversation. It says, in addition, and I, we have the application, it says it right in there. In addition, any reduction in staffing, we would have to submit an amendment for the grant, but it would still equal 125,000 per officer over three years. So if we do five officers, we get 625,000. If we do four, we get 500,000. If we do three officers, we only get 375,000.
Yeah, so the grant is up to X, to up to five officers.
Right.
But, so.
The less officers you have, the more it covers.
Three officers over four years would cost us about 1.2 million.
It's not.
And we'd subtract the 375,000 dollar grant from it.
So, Judge, you got the floor. A comment was made to me earlier about the sunshine laws, whether they're automatic, whether we power. This, uh, ordinance that you have here changes the complement. And the mayor's corrected his note that the complement is controlled by you. However, because it isn't before me, and I wasn't prepared for this, there is an ordinance existing, uh, setting forth your intent when you got, uh, the money to put on the additional order, officers. You also have an ordinance, I think it's contained where they're in, that there was a sunshine clause. Meaning that the, all the parties agreed that at a certain point, when it became the city's responsibility to pay for these officers, because the funding stopped, and the city had to put it in their budget if they kept them. It was agreed at that time, the city wasn't gonna do that. They were going to sunshine the jobs. What I'm getting at is that you have legislation contradictory to what you have here, and if you're intending to do anything with the complement tonight, the original legislation that you passed has to be brought before you and rescinded. Because, uh, supposedly, it's going to affect automatically. But you have two conflicting complement orders would be existing at the same time. You can't do that. So, obviously, I'm correct that this is going into committee, the one that's before. And I see it's, uh, taking, uh, gonna leave, uh, two officers there. The complement's gonna be, uh, instead of, uh, what it was before, two, two are gonna retain, and, uh, I guess three are going. That is a decision that you make, and you alone make, except that it, then it has to go to the mayor, and he has to make a decision whether he's going along with whatever you do. And he has veto power. So my suggestion is that at the next meeting, that the legislation you originally adopted be brought before you, uh, to look at. Then if somebody wants to draw an ordinance, like you're the sponsor of this ordinance, you would have to draw an ordinance, uh, rescinding that, is, I presume, in its entirety. Or you could mend it as to theory, but not as to actual operation, because the complement has to be clearly stated in the form of the ordinance you have before you that's gonna be in committee. I know that sounds a little technical to you, but this is a legalese. You, you cannot, when people look at the records of the common council, and they see an ordinance where you did this, and then you did something else, but the other ordinance still exists, something has to happen with it.
Right, and Judge, the, the only.
They're, they're conflicting.
The, the only other question.
All I'm saying to you, I'm not commenting on the theory, nor what you, uh, will ultimately decide about this, about the fiscal, this, that, and the other. You have questions about where the money's coming, et cetera. I'm talking about the procedural aspect of, I'm recommending, uh, that I don't, I don't think it's subject to argument, that you do have a contradictory ordinance in existence. And I would like that be, be before you, and if somebody wants to make some sort of adjustment to that ordinance, fine.
Well, Judge, I, I think the legislation's.
At least, at least your records, when people open the books,
They understand what they're.
They'll see that you changed the complement on a certain night, and you rescinded a pass ordinance that said just the opposite that you were gonna do.
And that's why you shouldn't sunset ordinances.
That's my only comment. I'm not co, commenting, commenting on the, uh, the, uh, ordinance itself, how many men should be, or women should be in the police department.
Judge, the.
I'm complimenting about the procedural aspect.
So this is the problem that I have with the ordinance that's, that's, that's proposed to us. So you've got nine, and you've got 10. So nine puts the complement back to 170, where it is now, and that still has a sunset clause in there. The other one is, is ordinance number 10, and says, ordinance amending the composition of Bureau of Police to add temporary police officers and investigators, which goes back to the original title of the, the other legislation that was passed two years ago. The only thing that, that's bothersome to this is that they added a sunset clause in the ARPA funding that was tied to that. This one adds back two officers, even though that it's tied to a grant, and also doesn't have that sunset clause in there.
Counsel, I'm your attorney. I was not consulted on this matter.
I, I see that.
I was not asked for my opinion, and of course, if I wasn't asked, I don't give an opinion unless I'm asked. I'm telling you now, procedurally, you have some work to do before you get to the final answer of the questions that are being.
Because it's after the vacancies occur.
And I think also that will include, uh, the mayor of the city, Butica, as to what your intents are.
And that's what he's saying too, that goes back to the point of adding those officers back. I think it was what, April you said?
Judge, Judge, so is it, to simplify, what you're saying is you have to let the ordinance play out.
Sorry.
You have to let the ordinance play out, so after January 1st, when those positions sunset, at that point, the council can act and decide if they wanna add officers or not. You have to let the ordinance.
And what he's saying is. Or the ordinance as written right now has to be changed.
Or changed.
To correct that.
And I knew, you know, specifically what the dates and times are, and all of that data was before me. And this is the last meeting of this particular body this year, and so there, uh, like, I, I, I can't do.
It's our understanding, Judge, from the police department, that the officers.
This came awful late.
January 1st, those positions sunset. The positions are vacated. Effect, but, but with, through attrition. We have one vacancy, and then additional vacancies. We're not gonna lose any employees, but the council has time to decide how many officers, hopefully all five, as many, you know, how many officers are gonna, they can add that to the.
If you read the legislation, it says after.
The place is that, uh, you bring this up before the mayor and the council between now and first of the year, and see whether there's some mythology that will be used. That you, again, are talking about the technical aspects.
Right.
That doesn't mean that the technical aspects are what's gonna happen. You see, I, I can't offer you any other. And I think there is also, knowing this body as I know it, they're thinking, well, we could do things by special meeting. No question. But, uh, I don't know, and I'm not recommending that the council hurry into anything, because I don't think that in the end, it's gonna make much difference. If they change the complement on January 15th, it's, they can make it retroactive. They can do whatever they wish, cause they control the count, the complement. So if, if the number changes on January 15th, or sometime that, it'll, if it's retroactive, it's just gonna go on. People don't just lose their jobs automatically because of an ordinance that may, uh.
Judge, and the way it's written too, our understanding is with the sunset clause, with the sunset clause, the way it's written, no one will lose their jobs. There'll just be vacancies as they occur.
The, the sunset law, the original deal was that the positions would be empty, and there would be no problem because of attrition.
Right.
But the, but the business of attrition was up to the police department, not the common council. It was the police department that this council, uh, gave the, uh, go ahead to do that which they're directing you to do, to take those positions by attrition, so that when it came to the sunset law, we wouldn't be having this discussion, would we?
Right, and our, our hopes, Judge, is through, you know, once those are vacated through attrition, our hope was to lobby the council and the mayor to get those positions back, using, utilizing in part that grant funding we received from the federal government. That, that's, that's.
I understand what you're saying, and I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I'm not, Chief, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I'm just saying that, you know, the law is the law, and you can't make shortcuts just because it's convenient. They have to do things that are proper, and when it comes to the comp, complement, which is their sole duty in the first place, uh, only they can change the count, the complement. And I think that there is, you're seeing here, some very serious, uh, problems among themselves about what they agreed to and what's being proposed to them, and whether, uh, how they're gonna go. I've seen, read, read the mayor's, uh, proposal or letter, or however you wanna view that. That's the way he feels, and, uh, a majority of this council feels the same way. That's probably gonna happen. But, you know, at least the five of these people have to agree to that, and, uh, that's, that's the way I, I look at it.
Judge, but legally, it shouldn't happen until after the ordinance.
Pardon me?
Or.
Correct.
Legally, it shouldn't happen until.
Well, it could happen simultaneously.
With a, with a rescinding, with rescinding the prior ordinance.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can, you can predate the effectiveness of an ordinance within an ordinance. You know, as long as you do it procedure, you know, you have very good counsel sitting here in the person of Mr. Giorgio. You have a very good counsel upstairs, Mr. Brown. You have an attorney sitting as a member of the common council, and you have me. And we, uh, can do anything that will be legal, uh, procedurally, because this is a, this is a procedural aspect as well as a philosophical aspect. And also, it involves what another group of people did three years ago. So, uh, if there's been a change of heart, and there's enough votes for it, and the mayor wants to do it, uh, I don't think there's any problem with doing, uh, what has to be done in a legal sense. So when, when somebody reads this a year from now, they see exactly what you did. You rescinded a previous ordinance, which was a sunshine law. That goes out. You changed the complement, and you, uh, made it retroactive as to the people you put on. I don't think the administration or the, the legal office upstairs is gonna object to that. If they wanna draw it in a way that makes them happy, they can be my guest. Mr. Giorgio will discuss this with Mr. Brown.
I just want.
Well, by the way, as long as we're getting to that, and we have the time. Mr. Giorgio, were you aware of this before we came into it?
I was not.
I was not.
You were not?
I was not.
Okay, so I, do you disagree with anything I'm saying procedurally?
No, I agree with you, Judge. My only other comment is, if they choose to rescind or place an ordinance today to rescind the prior ordinance, that will take away two positions, and I believe the deputy chief said, you have one vacancy right now, so it will eliminate one position unless you wait until after January, or whenever you get that other-
Stephanie, this is an ordinance, so it would need unanimous the first time out anyways. So we're not making any moves on this legislation as a-
Let me conclude this by saying, I am not worried about the procedural aspects, that is doable. The philosophical aspects are decision of the nine people here and the gentlemen sitting up.
I just have one question.
Okay.
Mr. Gentile's got the board. Can I speak?
He said he's just going to be scheduled.
Who's that?
So I just want to make it clear, from the mayor's office through the budget director and the chief of police, we feel that the best approach that is most fiscally responsible is to move forward with three of those positions. Obviously, we support and want to see as many officers as possible, but we also want to protect the taxpayer and be fiscally responsible. So as of, you know, today, and all of our information through the budget office, chief of police, and the mayor's office, three positions is, for lack of a better term, sweet spot of what we feel that we can, you know, cover responsibly, but also cover responsibly moving forward. Obviously, that is something that this body can always look at and consider adding. As the judge said, you have control over the complement, but the fiscally responsible plan moving forward, as discussed, has been to move forward with three officers.
Thank you.
I think the most fiscally responsible would be to first find out the pathway to justice that's running out. Is there any plans for it? Because apparently on the 31st of this year, if we don't use it, we're going to lose $300,000 that is out there. Am I incorrect in stating that?
And so as-
And there's also the $290,000, was it?
$300,000.
$2 million that Marianne Button Sean has placed with us, and the city has yet to do anything with it as well. For a city that had a 15% or 14% tax increase, to have this money just sitting out there in the coffers, I think it's not very fiscally responsible. And then, right now, you want three, but come after the 1st of the year, it sounds like you're going to ask for two more police officers, and that's going to increase our budget, after we just increased the budget 14%. So, you know, there's a lot of ways that you could put this, but I think fiscally, I think that the mayor is just hiding money to use it for other issues, instead of using it for what it was actually laid out there for.
You know, I'll make it, I mean, I'll just make it very clear.
Well, just putting it out there. What happened to the pathway to justice? Are you going to use it?
Yes.
You've got like, a week to find out to use it.
Yes, it needs to be allocated.
And we haven't heard anything on it, on this, on Marianne Button Sean's money given to us. I don't see any contracts being filled out on that.
Everybody could have brought this.
So, I think that, I think that the mayor's office needs to be a little more forthcoming. Well, let me finish what I'm saying, I let you finish, am I correct?
Not really.
Like, I certainly did. And so, I think that the mayor and the mayor's office needs to be forthcoming, and with all this money that he's hiding from us, what is he exactly going to do with it? Now, I'm done talking, you can go ahead.
So first of all, it's absolutely ridiculous to imply-
I don't think so. I don't think, personally, I don't think so.
That's fine, you don't have to, but again, it's ridiculous to imply that there's any money being hidden, okay? It isn't.
There is.
The pathway, the path-
Where's Marianne, where's the pathway to justice?
The pathways to justice, the pathways to justice money-
Have you used it? You've got a week to use it.
We don't have a week to use it, we have a week to allocate it, okay? Don't confuse the two.
Have you figured out what you're going to use it on?
Absolutely.
Well, why haven't we heard?
It's the purpose. We've talked about this all year. If you don't listen, then I can't help that, okay? We've, pathways to justice, pathways to justice has been utilized for pathways to justice all along, okay? You can wink at me all you want, okay? As far as Marianne Button Sean money, that is also money that we are going to utilize. There is not a dollar, there is not a dollar in-
Well, let me know when you're good, I'd be interested when you're planning the city. All that money you have out there, you just hold on to it.
With all due respect, this is the first time you've had a department head and a chief of staff at your council meeting in seven years. I haven't had the mayor or his chief of staff at a council meeting in seven years. You met him privately? No, I'm just saying, that was private conversations that you had. So you guys always voted on stuff.
I think that's enough.
You guys voted on stuff numerous times, without it publicly being known. We are finally getting this information publicly, and it's told you multiple times.
You know, we discussed-
You've got around 10 minutes, we're starting our meeting at 7:00.
I'd like to put this in committee.
And also, chief of staff-
Let's get more information on it, make sure we're-
I'll second that.
Councilman?
I want to speak on the Marianne Button Sean money. I don't believe-
I think we'll leave that for another day.
That money can be used for what you're talking about.
If I can also hear from-
And the skee-salope money, you don't have a clue about that, if you did, you'd know, because you can't touch that money. There's big projects going on there, and it has to be done, so I don't think you know where you're going with the Marianne Button Sean money.
I also-
I think that we want to have a further-
Bob, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting, and we'll discuss this-
No, I've got one question, it doesn't pertain to any of this. Chief of staff, can you tell me when, we've been talking about this for probably almost a year now, when is the business park sign going to be changed to D'Amio instead of LaPola?
We need to sign it.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Thank you. I can answer that, I talked to the guy yesterday, it will be done by the end of the year.
Okay, all right.
Wait, don't we, as a council, we need to vote on that, right?
That was already-
Did we vote on that one?
No.
Do the name change for her? Council is the one who already changed it to be the-
We did a resolution, can you-
Bob, I'd like to make a motion of-
We have one more question.
I just have a question. Councilman Beatrice, you mentioned the $2 million allocated for the Val by Alice, from the administration, is there an update on that? On that funding for the Val by Alice?
I was provided a scope of work for that money, the full $2 million, as a result of discussions between the mayor and engineering department. I have been in contact with the dormitory authority of the state of New York, DASNY, who is administering those $2 million dollars. They are waiting for SHIPO, State Historic Preservation Office, opinion that was submitted by myself online, the scope of work, earlier this week, and within 30 days, they're supposed to respond, and I will provide that to DASNY, at which point I believe they will provide the city with a grant agreement for that full $2 million. They've already technically given us the go-ahead to start incurring costs, because the money's been announced, we just can't request reimbursement until we have a grant agreement in place.
Is this, are we talking end of '24, early '25, or into next winter, end of '25, early '26, timeline-wise?
Timeline for what?
To start utilizing the funds.
As I said, DASNY's already given us the authorization to go ahead and start incurring costs against that $2 million. We just can't, until we have a grant, signed grant agreement in place, we can't request reimbursement against those costs. But we can start incurring costs now.
We have incurred costs.
Okay, one more question.
I just want to make one other point, I know the police complement is going into committee, but there is some errors with the actual numbers, it's my understanding, and I just confirmed this with the deputy chief, that we added a captain either earlier this year, or at the end of last year, at some point. So these numbers will have to be calculated, so that they reflect the actual numbers of captains, lieutenants, sergeants, et cetera, to make sure that they are in compliance with what we passed previously to allow for that other captain.
It's not the last legislation that we actually passed, when we added the captain, when Captain Holt went to the FBI academy, we added that captain's positions to make sure that somebody could be in there, in order to make sure that they were doing everything that came with, like the boil maker, all the stuff that we usually deal with. So this legislation, I'm going to ask to actually be dismissed, and the reason I'm going to is because, first of all, your legislation should be drafted in its original intent, to have the complement up to date where it is, where you have that additional captain position, it should have the sunset clause in there, not be changed to where it was. So even if you were to take legislation, legislation number nine, it's not the original legislation that was last passed by this body, that's the legislation that would have to be rescinded, and then you could submit another piece of legislation, which, I, again, I'm against sunset clauses, but if you're tying it to a grant for what the police department actually has, that language should probably be included in it, because at that point in time, that money runs out as well. So I wouldn't submit any of these pieces of legislation to committee, we can actually just hold a committee meeting and draft it together if we have to before our next meeting, and that would probably be the best-case scenario to go with. Because they're not drafted from the original legislation that we originally passed, when we added that captain's position.
If anybody needs that translated, the code is, I sponsored these, so these are under my name, so if we want to discharge these, that's fine, and we can put it in under somebody else's name. I don't care. But I just did this because we've known this has been coming December 31st, since we started this, and nobody has said anything. And this is what's been very frustrating.
The sunset starts December 31st, so the positions are not eliminated as of December 31st. This legislation was placed into committee prior to the judge knowing, prior to the council getting any of these pieces of legislation. So if you actually talked to the rest of the council, you might have been able to draft the legislation correctly, and you talked to the judge, so that we wouldn't be having a 30-minute discussion, or an hour discussion, on legislation that isn't even appropriate to be placed in committee.
This is absolutely something we should be talking about, I think it's a good thing.
Katie, we have been talking about it for, Chief, how long have I been talking to you about this? Months now?
We need legislation.
I mean, since we passed the legislation to make sure that we were okay with it.
It doesn't matter. A motion to adjourn.
Can I just say one thing? You know, you said, you referred to Captain Holt going to the academy as part of adding a captain, so that, adding a fourth captain was irregardless of him leaving.
Of the complement, understand.
It was because of more duties and the captain.
100%, and I agree with that. I was just saying, as a reference for everybody to remember a little easier of that time that we added that position, absolutely.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. [end of transcript] Come to order, the city clerk will call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Bittar, Carcone, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Klassimo Testa, LaMedico, Drutzy, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to follow the British stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice of all.
Is there a motion and a second to dispense the reading of minutes from the previous meeting? There's no one signed up for public comment period. There's no common guest, common council, guest speaker, so we'll go right to a report of city officers. Brian Thomas, Urban Rennell.
Uh, no report.
Stephanie GiGiorgio, corporation counsel.
Nothing to report.
Chief Noonan.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, chief. Fire chief, Angersall.
Yeah, I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone. Fire safety is a big thing this time of year and throughout the winter. We just had a fire on Saturday morning that was caused by a space heater that was too close to clothing, so I'd just like to remind everybody, if they're using a space heater, to keep an appropriate distance, at least three feet clear from, from the heater, and make sure that they got working smoke detectors.
Thank you, fire chief. Commissioner Parks, Mark Sokolowski.
Nothing to report, since you skipped.
Well, I do, at the end.
I got a favor to report.
Engineer, Nick Bradenbecker.
Yeah, I want to announce the ice rink is open Friday, Saturday, Sunday, for kid and adult skate, and Tuesdays and Thursdays for adult skate, and I also want to acknowledge the Parks Department for all their hard work of keeping it open, keeping it clean. Last weekend was a success, and it wouldn't be here without the Parks Department. That's all I got.
Thank you. Budget director, Almar Coltech.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Commissioner of Code, Marcus Phillips.
I think I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on the recent passing of my predecessor, Dave Farina. We're devastated in the codes department to learn that Dave Farina had passed away, and, you know, he was the commissioner that hired me. He's the person that taught me codes. He ran the department for 10 years. I inherited for codes then, he did a great service in the city of Utica. I struggle with to say about him, because I, I don't mean this as a pejorative, but like, Dave Farina is kind of like an unremarkable, unspectacular person, right? So the word that came to my, my mind was just dutiful. I mean, he came to work every day and did his duty to help the city be safer and clean, and you can't measure the impact that a person like that had on the city, so. Best wishes to his family, and wish him well in the next chapter.
Well said. Chief Tyle.
You know, sounds like a true public servant, so extend those regards. Yeah, so the skating rink has been open. It's been a huge undertaking from, you know, the plan to utilize an outside organization to come in, but instead, we have brought that all in-house, you know, which meant, you know, purchasing skates, purchasing a Zamboni, but another example of how the, you know, the mayor's office has taken, you know, a potential negative and turned it around to a positive. We've also worked with workforce development to hire youth employment to, to run the skating rink, and it's, you know, it's really been a testament. As we brought in youth, half of them never put on a pair of skates, you know. We set the goal that, you know, outside of, you know, learning the tasks of the employment, but wanting them all to learn how to, how to skate as well, and, you know, the first night was, was a light night as far as participants, but we really were able to watch them, you know, test those things out and try new things, and really wanting to make sure that the message is not only that we want to utilize and provide employment for our youth in the city and make that investment, but also make sure that it's a meaningful experience, and that people are trying to get the most out of that job experience and have a positive experience within the city. So a huge shout out to workforce development for partnering with us in that employment. Also, you know, tomorrow we have Santa at City Hall. We've, three consecutive Tuesdays, we've had Santa in Bag Square. We, you know, and through this holiday season, we're really trying to be proactive. I know the Parks Department has, has been working hard, but also our youth bureau has been working hard to provide as much possible for our youth. And, you know, it's, it's really a trend of this administration to make sure that, you know, we are breaking down those barriers and providing as much possible for, you know, youth employment, youth engagement, and everything else that we can do, because that's, you know, truly our interaction and how we develop, you know, a positive atmosphere for, for our young people. So I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, et cetera, and I look forward to moving into the year 2025, working hard to make sure that we're doing everything we can to move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. No miscellaneous communications, no cash report, petitions, remonstratives, and appeals, first district council member.
Katie Aylo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just kind of going over all the numbers that we've had over the year. You know, I'm on the board of E&amp;A. I scheduled a committee meeting October 16th to go over ARPA. Very concerned we will be losing money by December 31st. I know people said, we have plenty of things to spend it on. I agree. I'm just concerned that they're not in the right allocations. We have six business days left of the year to either schedule another E&amp;A meeting and transfer them if we need to, but without seeing a contract here for things like Pathway to Justice that confirms what the state would need for us to keep those funds for that purpose, I'm just, no problem. I'm just concerned with that. And tonight, you know, I listed about six different grants from police salaries of totally about 1.6 million, and the administration can't really tell me where, like, 1 million of it is. And I know that it's just a matter of actually getting the contracts done for a lot of these grants and executing it. And I waited till December 18th, and maybe I should have done it sooner, to bring up the police sunset clause, or any of us should have, but here we are, and any other time I do it, people say it's political and frustrating, but I'm here to do a job we were all elected to do, and it's upsetting to me that the council does not want to move forward tonight with either extending the police complement in some way. But that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Second district council member, majority leader, Robert Burmaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, again, I want to thank all the department heads for coming to the meetings. It means a lot to me, and it's great to see you here, and I want to reiterate it. I do appreciate it, and I appreciate each and every one of you. I want to thank the people for coming tonight, and I wish everybody a happy holiday, and I had a compliment this week. My son works for the county, got out of work the other night, and one of the girls he works with, her car windshield was taken out, and she was on the phone with 911, calling the Utica Police Department. Before she got off the call, UPD was there to take care of her problem, and she was impressed. And I just want to thank the Utica Police for, for doing, doing what they do, the fire department, Parks Department, the engineer, it just, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert. Third district council member and president, President Protemp, Joseph Bittar.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, at this point, being our last regularly scheduled meeting at 24, just a collective thank you here, going around, members of the council, council president, judge, our two clerk and deputy clerk here, our inner table, our department heads, and everyone who comes to these meetings, members of the public, those who watch on YouTube, you know, I've learned a lot this year, and a big reason for that is members of our council, everyone sitting up here and at this inner circle here, guiding me along the way, pointing me in the right direction, always being available when I have questions. So after, after my first year on the council, come and do, come to a close here, just a collective thank you, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Fourth district council member, Frank Carcone.
Well, after my first year here, I would say it's definitely was a learning experience, and I'd like to thank Drew and Melissa, always answering questions when I called. I'd like to thank Sam, Mark, Joe, Erk, Venice, always answering questions. I had a lot of them, and I think I learned a lot, and I'm ready. I'd like to thank the Parks Department. Anytime I called, Mark or anybody, they took care of it right away. And our police and fire department, in my eyes, is second to nobody, and the most important thing we have in the city. And I hope everybody feels the same way, because it's a big, big problem all over the country right now. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice Christmas.
Thank you, council member. Fifth district council member, Vanna Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say Johnson Park Center is looking for a youth program director. I was looking for Marcus, because both of I worked for Johnson Park Center before, and I wanted to see his reaction, and see if he would possibly, you know. But if you know anybody that wants a youth program director's job, call them up and see if, let them put an application in. Secondly, I just to let you guys know, I entered into Fantasy Football League on my job, and I kept wondering why, at the end of the year, there was an E next to my name, and, because I don't know a lot about that fantasy football, what that means is I'm in last place, and I'm eliminated from the playoffs, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sixth district council member, Joe Beatrice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and all you guys' departments, and every fellow council people have a great and safe holiday season with your families, and thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member and minority leader, Mark Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to wish everybody a happy holidays, and, you know, I'm going to bite my lip, because I'm very disappointed tonight, very disappointed, is all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Council member-at-large, Samantha Klassimo Testa.
Even when I bite my lip, I still have something to say, so. I agree with Mark in, in being disappointed in, in some of the conversations here tonight. With that said, I wanted to echo the chief's regards to fire safety. I appreciate the fact that Philly Torzano put out a memo to the Observer Dispatch and fire safety, and I think that's extremely important. It has affected, you know, students in our school, and it's, it's a very disappointing thing to see, especially during these, you know, the holiday season for a family to have to go through that. There's two very important birthdays this week, though, so I'd like to give a shout out. It's hard to believe that a little over 11 years ago, I was pregnant, in Joe's seat, with my son, and he turns 11 this Friday, so I'd like to wish my son Mello a very happy birthday. I'm very proud of him and everything that he's been able to accomplish thus far. So happy birthday, little Mello. And then also, I have 80th birthday party, 80th birthday that I'd like to wish Mrs. Sacco for, so she turns, she turned 80 this week. I'm very sorry that I missed your birthday, but I'll be there next year for it, so I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday. Merry Christmas, everybody. It's been a, it's been a heck of a year, and I'm sure next year will be a heck of a year as well. I hope our goal is just to keep pushing the city forward, whether we agree or disagree, that's the most important part, is Utica. Last but not least, I'd like to acknowledge, you know, Brian Thomas, he's been sitting at this table for about, what, 12 years now, Brian? And everybody forgets about you when they go around in a discussion, so I want to give a shout out to Brian Thomas, because he sat here and he's listened to a lot of the arguments over the years, and he still comes with a smile, so. Even though the fire department, police department, and Parks Department, and codes department, and law department, and budget directors, and the engineering department all do a great job, so does Brian Thomas, so, congrats, Brian. Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member-at-large, Jack LaMedico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, just like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and a wonderful holiday season. I think everybody here, I enjoy working with our council and the staff here. Mark, special thank you for taking care of that Simon's place, the flowering issue there. You've always, as soon as I call up, you're right on it, our engineering department, all the different departments here, I'd like to thank you very much for everything.
Does he grow?
No, I agree. So anyways, maybe, maybe happy holidays, everyone, what's up, Samantha, okay, how's that? But anyways, thank you, and see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, my first year on the job, still learning, but I appreciate the council, all the department heads, and a special thanks to Melissa and Drew. They're amazing. They really are everything behind the legislation and the amount of work that they have, so they've really guided me and given me great support, and I appreciate them. Yes, Judge.
I would like to say that I, as of December 31st, have completed 26 years as the attorney of the common council, and I'm heading into my 27th year, thanks to the common council. I'm sure that it took them a long time to decide whether I could do the job as I have done in the past, and I'm thankful for having confidence in me. I must say that the common council, I could say, is a very interesting body. I've been with them a long time, and I've been with many, many different councils. They argue with each other, they are contentious, but they are no different than any other legislative body. That is their job, and it is the job of Mr. Giorgio and I, and the people upstairs, to make sure that at least everything they do when it's over is, follows the legal procedures and laws. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I love this body, I love the city, I've gotten along with every single mayor whoever sat in that office in all those 26 years, and there's no exception with the present mayor. I think he's a fine person. His chief of staff is open to discussion at any time, his door is always open, and his department has, I know every one of them, and I think a great deal of them also. So I would like to say, just like everyone here, I hope you all have a happy and joyous Christmas, and I hope that 2025 is as good a year as you can have in your lifetime for you and your family. And I appreciate the president giving me the opportunity to say thank you to the two clerks and him, who are wonderful people. Working with you, Mr. Drutzy, has been a tremendous pleasure.
Thank you, Judge.
And of course, the two persons sitting next to him, we've been with a lot of city clerks and a lot of deputies, and they rate very, very high in my book, as very fine people individually, but also in the job that they do for this body and myself, and I thank them also. And Merry Christmas to everybody, and thank you, Mr. Drutzy.
Well said, Judge. Thank you. Motion to introduce proposed resolution one. Second.
Second.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the file. the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December 31st, 2026. Priscilla Garcia Hodge, 81 Prospect Street, Utica, New York, 13501. Votes, please.
90's adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 2.
Motion. Thank you.
Yep, Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved, the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December 31st, 2026. Ingrid V. Quinzeno, 919 Cherry Street, Utica, New York, 13502. Votes, please.
90's adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 3.
Motion. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term December 31st, 2026. Edada Rosick, 1601 Salsa Place, Utica, New York, 13501.
90's adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 4.
Motion.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved, Commissioner, that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment of Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December 31st, 2026. John J. Golf II, 15 Concord Boulevard, Clinton, New York, 13323.
90's adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 5.
Thank you. Second. Thank you.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December 31st, 2026. Tatiana Brooks, 708 Noi Street, Apartment 2, Utica, New York, 13502.
90's adopted.
I'd like to make the motion to put Legis, piece of, Resolution Number 7 in the committee.
Well, we're on, I have, we're going to 6 right now. Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 6.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December 31st, 2026. Thalia Hunter, 701 Buchanan Road, Utica, New York, 13502.
90's adopted.
Motion to commit, Resolution 7?
I'll second the motion.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 8.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term December 31st, 2026. David A. Refaro, 1011 James Street, Utica, New York, 13501. Votes, please.
90's adopted.
Motion to commit, ordinance 9.
We have a motion and second. Can we have your votes put in committee?
Just committee.
8 yeas committed.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 10.
Motion.
Second. Yep, Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved, the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December 31st, 2026. Anthony Leone, 501 Mary Elaine Drive, Utica, New York, 13502. Votes, please.
90's adopted.
I'd like to make the motion to introduce, in ordinance...
I, Sam, I have one more.
Which one's that?
Tom Hallard.
Hallard. Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number 11. Yep, Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved, the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December 31st, 2026. Thomas Hallard, P.O., Box 756, Hartford, New York, 13413.
Your votes? 90's adopted.
Motion to commit, ordinance 10. Motion to commit, ordinance 10.
Second.
That was this one.
Votes, please.
Yep, thanks.
8 yeas committed.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to introduce resolution announcement of the common council meeting dates for 2025, for January. We have two dates available, which is January 8th and January 15th. The council's got to decide if they want to go to one meeting, or they want to keep it at two, and what dates they would like the meeting to be.
We got to change the year to 25.
Yeah, you got to change the whole, you got to change the whole thing. I wanted to re, I'll read it as is, once they decide a date.
Don't our rules of order say we have to have two meetings?
No.
Did we look at that?
You never have to. That's, that's when the regular scheduled meetings are.
We talked about it last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what she's doing it right now, so.
So you got to figure January 8th or January 15th? The 15th.
Yeah, because it'd be January 1st, but we obviously can't do it the 1st, then the 15th, so why don't we just stick with the 15th? Yeah, because we were going anyways. We can do that, but we'll stick with the 15th of January.
Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance, or introduce the resolution adopting our January meeting to January 15th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers.
Second.
Second. Votes, please.
90's adopted.
Like to make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions for the judge before we adjourn?